...2016 meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you would stand with us, please Commissioner Pettis Reed will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Pettis?
Yeah, we pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, we offer a thanks for this day that you've given us. And as we now go into the evening tide of the afternoon, Father, we offer a special prayer for those that have lost loved ones in the Orlando area, and we ask that you be with this country as we have a troubled time. Father, we ask that you guide us, that you direct us, and be with us as we go about these problems. We ask, Father, that you be with this commission as they go about making the decisions tonight, that you give us that guidance too. Father, we're so thankful for this county, for what we have here, but may we always remember that the blessings that we do have come from you. Watch over us, protect us, and guide us. We offer this prayer in your son's holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Those of you that don't know, Pettis Reed is a county commissioner, but before county commissioner, he was a planning commissioner, and I just had to put him to work a little bit tonight. Thank you, Pettis. If you would, call the roll, please, Gail.
Rhonda Allen. Jim Aberwater.
Here.
Lee Bogle.
You.
Veronica Buchanan.
Yes.
Will Jordan.
Here.
Mike Kush.
Present.
Craig Lynch.
Present.
Chip Pinion. Charlotte P. Mike Vaught. Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Have a Coram.
Chip is not here tonight, and we hear that his father is ill, so you be remembering that family as you say your prayers tonight. We had one item, no minutes to approve, so we'll go right on into our agenda, item number five. We've had one item withdrawn, and that's item 6C, Eddie Smotherman, the item number That item has been withdrawn. Under new business rezoning requests that are scheduled for public hearings, 6A, item number 16-A-010, David Alcorn. 4613 Veterans Parkway, the county commissioner is Trey Gooch. Size of the site is approximately six acres, tax map 93, parcel 10. Existing zoning is RM residential medium density. Proposed zoning is CS commercial services. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and good evening, commissioners. Hope everybody's doing well today. It's the first time we've had a night meeting in a couple of months, so it's good to see everybody here on a Monday evening. The applicant would like to use, well, he wants to zone the subject property for use as the main office for their southern lifestyle homes. The existing house will be used as an office, an existing accessory structure behind the, pull up the aerial here, behind the house will be used for equipment storage. There'll be some vehicle and trailer storage behind the house as well. The applicant has met with the building code staff to determine what improvements would need to be made for the house in order for the change of occupancy to take effect. We did include a concept plan with your agenda materials. They would be on your iPads as well. Access, of course, would be from Veterans Parkway. They do plan to construct a new parking area. Any new parking lots, driveways, aisles, whatnot, would have to meet current zoning standards. To that effect, a site plan would have to be submitted to our office. It's probably something we could handle administratively, as there's really no new structures being built. It's really just site improvements, so that's something we could probably look at administratively. If this is approved, a type-two buffer will be required along any property line which is adjacent to residential zoning. Development projects, again, would be required to meet our landscape requirements. Again, that could be demonstrated on a site plan, and the performance standards that are found in our zoning ordinance, as far as lighting, noise, odors, and anything like that, would also take effect. Similar, we considered a rezoning application just a little further up the road from this property, a little closer to the interchange with 840, within the last six, eight months or so. And at that time, and I'll reiterate what I did then, you know, we do believe that this is an area that's in a state of transition. Since the completion of the widening and the realignment of Veterans Parkway, there have been multiple non-residential uses introduced to the area. Of course, right across the street, you have the city limits of Murfreesboro and the Cloister subdivision, a little further up the road, you've got Middle Tennessee Electrics Proposed Campus, the new Kroger development at the intersection of Franklin Road and Veterans Parkway, and there's also a commercial element to the PUD, which is over there at the intersection of Shores Road, Veterans Parkway, and the interchange at State Route 840. Again, the Board of Commissioners did approve a rezoning request at 4925 to Commercial Services back in their December 17, 2015 meeting. So for that, those reasons, staff does recommend approval of this application. The applicant is present and will be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time. Through the photos, sorry. This is looking directly across the street. This will be looking to the, that'd be to the north. Across the street again, onto the property. I'd be looking down to the south, back toward Franklin Highway. That's actually looking onto the property. That's looking at it from across the street. Okay, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff?
Doug, have you heard from any of the neighbors?
I have received some phone calls about this, yes, ma'am. Some of them have been general information. Some of them have, apparently there's some restrictive covenant on the property that they have to have a percentage in order to change that covenant. However, that's not something, and I've explained those to the people I've talked to, that's not something really we can consider, but those have been most of the phone calls that I've received.
Any other questions for staff? Ready for our public hearing? This time, I'll declare a public hearing open for item number 16-A-010, David Alcorn. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Doug, would you repeat what you said about the covenant, restrictive covenant, that you have to have a majority of owners?
Yeah, my understanding, at least from what I've heard, is that there's a covenant on a lot of these tracks up and down through here, that 51% of the, I guess, the landowners have to sign off on, the covenant basically says no commercial development allowed on the property, but the covenant can be changed if you have 51% of the landowners agree to that. I think there's been some movement in that direction. I'm not sure if that's really been finalized yet. My understanding, it hasn't, but again, that's not something we really look at when we're looking at the rezoning of property, anyway, so.
Yes, this next follow-up would be for Josh. Josh, who trumps? Does the covenant for the subdivision trump?
Does ultimately. So, you know, we've had this come up a few times over the years, and Doug's right, we don't, we don't really consider the restrictive covenants when we're considering a rezoning or some other application. So if you were to approve this, and it still violates a restrictive covenant in that area, then presumably he could not move forward, and the neighbors could pursue some type of action, I suppose, in the chance record and try to enforce the restrictive covenant. Conversely, he might be able to get the requisite number of people required to sign off and get it amended, and he would be fine. So it just, in the end, he's got to deal with that restrictive covenant regardless of what we do here tonight.
There's no deal or notification on the ring if we approve this?
Isn't, is not. In fact, I'm very comfortable with the proposition that the planning commission really ought not consider private restrictive covenants in its deliberations about, I mean, beyond this conversation, which is fine, but I mean, ultimately, in your decision, you should not make it based upon private restrictive covenants.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I'm part owner of a track, it's one, two, three, five tracks down, which is part of the restricted property, and so with that information, I'm going to abstain from voting or participating in this discussion on this one.
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan.
Doug, the section in red across the street that you've got shaded in, that's city limits, right?
You're talking about this?
No, it's a different screen. It's, um...
Oh. Well, let me back up past the pictures, excuse me. You're talking this one?
No, there's one that I have where you've got the city limits shaded in.
Oh, it's probably the, yeah, that's not on the PowerPoint.
City limits.
Right, yeah, there's a, yeah, let me get to that. I'm pretty sure, because I included that in here, just for your reference.
Well, that was part of my question. You've got, there's zoning listed as CF.
Yes.
That looks like it's closest to that.
Right.
In terms of commercial. How different is the CF from what our CS is?
Yes, ma'am. The commercial, the CF in the city stands for commercial fringe. It's most comparable to our commercial services. They have three commercial designations, similar to what we do. They have a CL, which is commercial local, which would equate roughly to our commercial neighborhood. Their commercial fringe would be roughly equivalent to our commercial services, and their commercial highway would be what our commercial general is, roughly. I mean, they're not the same, but roughly speaking, yeah. They're both kind of the middle of the road, CF versus CS.
And what's on that map across the street is RM. The one at the bottom is now CH. That's been changed, and the one that's a little higher up is in the process of being changed from RM to CF in the, in the city. It may actually already be through the process by now.
Questions for staff?
Michael Hughes, you have no questions?
Nothing. I mean, we'll see this again on the site plan, so if they add any parking or any additional buildings or anything like that, we'll address that on the site plan.
Seeing that?
Nobody spoke for or against at the public hearing, and what seems to be a reasonable plan, I would make a motion to accept or approve based on staff's comments.
I second it.
Of a motion to approve and a second, item number 16-A-010, David Alcorn. All who's in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 6B, 16-A-011, Lucas Thompson for Jim Thompson. Location is Jackson Ridge Road. County commissioner is Pettis Reed. Size of the site is approximately five acres, tax map 146. Existing zoning is RM residential medium density. Proposed zoning is CG commercial general. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along Jackson Ridge Road. As a way of background on this property, it was originally zoned services under the previous zoning resolution back in 2005. We did include the conditional use permit with your agenda packets. It was approved for a variety of uses, including mini warehouses, storage of boats, RVs, ATVs, also maintenance service businesses, which included heating and air conditioning maintenance, lawn and garden maintenance, plumbing, and janitorial services. The property was never developed with any of these businesses, and the conditional use permit ultimately lapsed. When we did the comprehensive rezoning back in 2013, since there was no development on the property, similar to what we did with other type properties that had pre-existing zoning in this situation where nothing was ever established, it went back down to what the, I guess, the default zoning would have been for that time, and that, well, what the new zoning was, was RM back in 2013 again. So the applicant is asking to reestablish the commercial zoning and to construct a mini storage business on the property. Concept plan has been provided and was included with your agenda materials as well. See, they're asking for commercial general zoning, which is our most permissive of the commercial zones. That zoning does not allow mini warehouses by right, so they will have to get a special exception approved through the Board of Zoning Appeals. The concept plan does show the proposed construction of four buildings, as well as the existing barn on the property, which would remain, be transformed into indoor storage. The westernmost building would more than likely be used for RV and boat storage, and from what the applicant has related to staff, would probably be the first phase of what they would ultimately construct. Now, just understand that this is a non-binding site plan. There are some things, looking at that concept plan, that would have to be tweaked whenever, if this is approved and gets through the process, before we would see it as a final site plan, so what you're seeing there is not the, is not the final product. Of course, access would be from Jackson Ridge Road. As far as landscaping, parking requirements, and those kind of things, everything would have to be built to today's standards as well. Considering that the zoning of the property was commercial in the past, I feel that commercial zoning for this property is appropriate in the present. The only question that staff really had, and we talked about this with the applicant a little bit, didn't know if he wanted to have any discussion, that the uses that they're contemplating would be permitted in either commercial general or commercial services. Again, commercial general being the most permissive of the three commercial zones we have, commercial services kind of being middle of the road, commercial neighborhood being the least, least permissive, the most restrictive of the three commercial zones. We typically recommend commercial service zoning for many warehouse developments, but again, any, the uses that they're contemplating would be allowed under both commercial general or commercial services. With that, though, again, staff is comfortable with commercial zoning for the property, especially considering the background of this property. Just to give you a little bit of context, this is what the, this is looking onto the property, the existing structure. Looking toward 99 there. That's looking back toward, back toward the south, looking at it from across the street. With that, we'll be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is present.
Is the applicant or his representative giving you any reason why they're pursuing?
Well, we actually, I had the discussion with, with their representative today, Mr. Eniggero, with Huddleston Steel Engineering, who's present. There may have just been a little miscommunication between what I thought they were going to ask for and what they thought I had told them to ask for, for what they were proposing. It may have just been as simple as that. But after the conversation I had with Mr. Jim Thompson about it, I don't think he had a preference one way or the other. His concern was, could he do a mini warehouse on the property, which either way, even with the commercial general, he's still going to have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, so it's not a use by right in either zone.
Ready for our public hearing? Time, I'll declare a public hearing open for item number 16-A-011, Lucas Thompson for Jim Thompson. Is the applicant here? Would you please come forward? If you would, make a few comments.
Yes, we actually currently own a piece of property that's kind of adjacent to there, off of Highway 99, right there. You can see the other mini storages that are there currently, and we are built to capacity. I think right now, we're about 96% full and just finished our last phase of that location, which was nine buildings, which are completely full at this time. As far as the storage portion of it goes, people storing things indoors, I don't know that that is necessarily an immediate need, only, although we only have about eight available if the guy comes in and gets two tomorrow. The thing that we're really looking at is a three-sided structure with the front being open, so that we'd be able to park RVs, boats, those types of things, maybe eliminate some of the calls that, that you guys get in regards to somebody parking something in their subdivision down the road that they're not supposed to. I know that in the last 12 years, the number of calls that we've had in regards to that and the number of people that we've told no to, I'm pretty sure that we would have this building already full if we had it available unto them. That's pretty much it. I don't know, was there anything else you'd like me to say about it? Any questions, I guess?
Just the question on general services or commercial general. You've had a discussion on that, and what is your preference?
Certainly open to whatever would allow us to continue to run a storage operation. So, that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Thompson?
So the storage units at the very top of that page that are currently zoned, commercial services, those are the ones that you're referring to that you own?
Yes, well, my father does, yes, ma'am.
But, so that zoning works fine for you?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm assuming that the zoning that we have right there is the one that you're talking about coming down?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Yes, yes, whatever would meet the criteria that we've met so far would be wonderful.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak for or against item number 16-A-011?
First of all, thanks for your time, and thank you to Lucas Thompson. Just actually met him. He was gracious enough to go over the plan with me. My name's Bart Looney, Timothy Bart Looney on the plan. I actually bought the lot that is adjoining to Mr. Thompson here. I want to say, first of all, that I'm not here to infringe on, on anyone's livelihood. I just wanted to express my concern as an adjoining landowner, and I think I can speak for a few of the neighbors as well. We only have one here, but my concerns, we bought this lot last October, knowing that everything surrounding it was residential, other than the main lots there that run with New Salem Highway. And I never would have bought this lot if I knew that it was going to turn commercial, even though that it was a couple of, few years ago. I understand that Mr. Thompson and his father run a clean business. Everything I've heard and seen around town, they keep their place nice, easy on the eye. My concern is everyone that has now bought property on each of these lots have either children and/or grandchildren. My concern is that a commercial lot would bring more traffic, even though it is a storage unit, more traffic and noise. We bought land out here, along with other neighbors, to get out of the city and kind of into the country and have your own space. After he showed the plans to me, I don't have as great a concern, and I appreciate you doing that. I do, I would like, and I'm ignorant to this process, so forgive me, but if there's any concern other than the children that are going to be around and growing up around the area, it would be future developments. If Mr. Thompson ever sells the property and it's still deemed commercial, I would just love restrictions if this process does indeed turn to a commercial lot, that there can't be alcohol sales on the premises, or there can't be, you know, a convenience store that just plots down and takes over. Again, I'm ignorant to the process, so that may sound crazy, I just, I don't have a huge problem with, with his perspective and what he wants to do with that land. I just would like to be safe in the future, as we plan, as well as the other five people that are building currently behind the lot, that we keep it clean and suitable for children and grandchildren in the future. And that's really all that I ask for. And again, I appreciate, appreciate your time, and everyone else's, too.
May I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
What, again, the lot you purchased, is it the one that fronts Rockville or the long?
So it's, it adjoins his on the left side of this image. Correct, right there. And my driveway actually is on Rockville Road.
Is it there on Rockville?
Correct. It's a 4.05 acre plot. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Well, I remember this coming through last time, and there was a pretty good crowd. I remember it being somewhat controversial before. And Doug, I know you mentioned a while ago, and I may have missed it, but what happened with the approval, just due to their lack of moving forward, their approval lapsed on this?
Well, you know, what, I mean, a couple, couple things, really. Under the old ordinance, there was a provision in there regarding conditional use permits that if they weren't instituted, initiated within, I think it was 18-month period, then they lapsed. So that, this would have lapsed probably, you know, long before we undertook the zoning of the rezoning of the county, anyway. Now, when we were going through all the properties for the comprehensive rezoning that we did back in 2012 and 2013, whenever we saw a piece of property that had a conditional use permit on it like this but was never developed, we thought the best course of action for the vast majority of them, I won't say that there weren't a couple of exceptions here and there, there probably were, but the vast majority of them, we went back to whatever the base zoning was, simply due to the fact that by introducing a commercial zone, like for this instance, this had a conditional use permit for a limited number of uses. What we tried to do was, when we looked at existing commercial uses that had conditional use permits, we tried to match the zoning closest to what would allow the use. In this situation, the closest thing that would allow these uses that he was talking about probably would have been commercial services, but it would open it up to a lot more than just what he had approved. So we thought the best course of action would be to put it back to the residential zoning, and then if they ever decided to develop it in the future, at least at that point, we'd have another crack at it to say, okay, maybe this wasn't the best zoning to look at, maybe you should look at some lighter zoning or something that didn't have as many uses to it. So that's why this ultimately went back to the residential zoning as it, as it is currently.
I'm not going to make a motion to somebody. Everybody else has a chance to talk, but if I were to approve, be in favor of this, it would definitely be with the CS zoning instead of the CG, because that is somewhat restrictive. And I understand completely what Mr. Looney's saying, but would this be something, and I'm just thinking out loud here, would this be something maybe for a planned commercial development or something like that, that would restrict this further and stuff, so, you know, the economy change, this not getting developed? Five years down the road, you've got a piece of commercially zoned property there that could be whatever CS allows. CS is more restrictive than CG. I'm just trying to think of a way to protect the neighbors here, and I'll let you talk on.
Well, I mean, is that a possibility? It is, but to do that, I mean, it obviously is not what he asked for tonight, so that would have to either be deferred or just denied and let him go back and start the process over again. Now, if he zoned it to planned commercial, or planned unit development, PUD, I mean, there's a little more involved on the front end, but it would eliminate the Board of Zoning Appeals step, at least. But that way, he could come in there with more of a defined list of uses, as opposed to commercial services, which you said, I mean, you look in the ordinance, there are uses permitted by right, there's uses permitted by special exception to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and then there's uses that aren't permitted. And just to answer the gentleman's question, as far as, you know, limiting it to no alcohol sales or anything like that, that's really not something we can do under a traditional, well, I should say, conventional zone like commercial services. It's just under our ordinance now, it's not something we can really do.
Doug, you just said that if we wanted to approve commercial services versus commercial general, we'd have to defer this?
No, I think you could do that, because you're going from something more intense to something a little less intense. Now, the planned commercial development, that's, or the planned unit development, as we call it, that's a little bit different, because there's a lot more required on the front end than, than what he would have with this, so we would need more detailed information, a pattern book, you know, you're familiar with the pattern books that we see, so that's what would have to be.
That's good, a site plan on the front end to some extent with that.
Yeah, it's more conceptual still, because it would still have to go through site plan review and whatnot, but, but yeah, it's more detailed, and it's more locked in at that point.
Doug, will you refresh everybody's memory on what buffer requirements would need to be done to separate Mr. Looney's property from Mr.?
Yes, sir. It'd be a type-two buffer. Just opened up my ordinance here, so I can read right from that. We have three levels of buffer in the county, type-one, type-two, and type-three. Of course, type-one's the lightest of the three. Type-three is the heaviest. So type-two would be kind of the middle of the road of the two. There we go. Okay. Type-two buffer requirement requires an average buffer width of 30 feet, with a minimum buffer width of 15. And then there's plant material. For every 100 feet of buffer yard, you're required to have 50 evergreen, I'm sorry, five evergreen trees, 40, four ornamental trees, and 20 shrubs. Now, something that you can do to reduce the amount of plant material, a wall or solid fence, which is a minimum of six feet high, constructed of masonry rock or pressure-treated lumber or vinyl, could be used. That reduces the amount of buffer yard to the minimum buffer width, so the minimum width would be 15 feet in this type-two buffer, and then they wouldn't have to do any shrubs, but they'd still require to do the tree planting. Now, you'll recall, a few months ago, we changed the ordinance to allow the backs of mini warehouse-type developments to serve as part of that buffer, so they could actually use... use the back wall as part of that, as part of that buffer, should they so desire and construct it that way. So that would count as part of the wall that be required, and then they could supplement that with the plantings up and down through there. So, but the minimum width would be fifteen feet if they went with that wall or a fenced approach, a solid visual screen. If not, they would have to look at a minimum thirty feet along that, uh, along those lines that bordered residential property.
High restriction to that?
To the?
The buffers.
To the buffers? Not really, no sir. I mean, obviously you start building too high, you start getting into structural issues, but, uh, you know, if they wanted to build like eight, ten feet, there'd be nothing said they couldn't do that.
Well, here's why I asked the question, and if you all will look at that, uh, can you, Doug, can you slide to this diagram? It's the, just a little simple plan view.
Like, I've got that on my PowerPoint, but, uh, in fact, I know I don't, um, yeah, I don't have that on this PowerPoint, I'm sorry.
Well, we do, right. If you all will look at that particular site plan, yeah, the one you're on, here, here's something maybe to think about, and I'm, and again, not, I'm like Will, I'm not ready to make a motion yet, but that last row is built for boat and RV storage, which means that's gonna be super tall, probably pole barn type, or just, you know, wood columns with some kind of a metal roof. I would ask perhaps that Mr. Thompson and, uh, Mr. Gerald consider moving or sliding that tall boat and RV storage away from Looney's property, just for the site, the visual site appeal. Cause, uh, I, 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 I'm not sure, I'd wanna be sitting in the backyard and looking at a two-and-a-half-story tall steel roof reflecting sun into my array bands. So that's, that would be my suggestion is maybe they can manipulate or swap the inside storage, one of the inside storage lanes to the, with the boat RV, and just get that tall structure away from the property line.
And just so, uh, again, just so the, the commission understands and those folks in the audience understand too, um, if this gets approved tonight, of course, has to go through the Board of Commissioners as well, but then this use would have to be approved at the Board of Zoning Appeals. Now, the board has the ability to put reasonable restrictions upon special exceptions, and what you're talking about, Mr. Kush, that in my mind is, is reasonable. You know, if they were to, especially if the applicant's willing to do it, then I don't see any reason why the board would be, uh, hesitant to, to make that a condition of approval.
I think you were able to answer my question there because typically the mini storages are closed on four sides, and this being, this one structure being three-sided, I know we're talking about the zoning, but thinking ahead, you know, to, like you said, the visual side of this, the other three look like they're gonna just be basically a covered, open on either side to, to pull through, back through. I mean, that's just my vision that I have there, so the, the buffer that, in the planned unit or anything more restrictive, can a stronger buffer be required for shielding those sort of things since it's more of an open mini storage than a typical?
In a, in a planned development, it can. I mean, it can, it's pretty much, you can dictate what you want at that point. My understanding of this, just from, at least from my understanding, would be, I don't think the, the inside storage outside of the boat and RVs, I think they would be closed on all sides, they'd have doors on both sides, on the longsides, or, you know, they'd have units on both sides, is probably more likely what he's, what he's proposing to do.
And also too, that Jackson Ridge Road, that's part of State Route two sixty-nine as well, isn't it?
Yeah, I believe it is.
So it require a T-dot permit?
Right.
Doug, can we talk about the planned unit development again for just a second? You said that he would have to start the process all over, but that it would eliminate the BZA step.
Correct, yes ma'am.
So, i- is there any way for us to defer this if he's doing it on our recommendation? I don't want him to take steps backwards in terms of moving forward. I don't think anybody's overly opposed to it. I think we're looking for probably ways to maybe help him and, and the other landowner out, so I'm just curious to know, what are your thoughts in terms of if we were to defer this maybe to our two-week meeting, give them time to put together a, a planned unit development package? I, and I don't even know if they wanna do that. I'm just saying, I don't know if there's a difference in fees, I, I don't know, I don't know how it will impact him.
Well, as far as fees, I mean, we won't recharge him from our standpoint. Now, typically, when it comes to planned developments, we see a pattern book that's prepared by one of the local engineering firms, so there probably will be some, some additional fees in that regard. One of the requirements for any planned development is that they are required to have a neighborhood meeting. Uh, that's not required for every rezoning, but it is required for planned developments. Uh, and the reason we do that is because a lot of the times they're asking, well, it's for residential developments especially, a lot of times they're asking for lots smaller than what would be allowed normally anyway. So we do require a neighborhood meeting for that. So to have something back in two weeks while they may be able to get the engineering of it done and everything, I doubt they'd be able to reasonably have a neighborhood meeting in two weeks. So something like that, I think, would have to come back to the planning commission, to this body. Uh, now, that being said, he's not, he does have kind of a, an extra month built into this process because the Board of Commissioners does not meet in the month of July, so anything we consider tonight is going to August anyway. So there is a little bit of time built in there, either he's waiting a month now or he's waiting a month later. So if that is something that, you know, the commission feels comfortable with, I mean, he's gonna have to wait till August to go to the Board of Commissioners anyway. So if he might be able to get done and get everything done by the time the July Planning Commission meeting rolls around.
Did you hear from any of the other neighbors?
I heard from about two or three of them, I guess. The gentleman that spoke, uh, he was one of them, I spoke to him a couple times. Uh, seems like there was one or two others that contacted me about this, and I mean, some of, I, I did get some phone calls that were just general information, but there were some that, including the, the gentleman that spoke, that they'd have, that, that had similar concerns to what he had.
Doug, if we were to make a motion to defer this, would that leave the staff and the applicant the flexibility to kind of change his application before the next meeting and bring it back at whatever timetable?
Yes, we just, yeah, we would just re-advertise it at, at that point, whatever we end up going with with the zoning.
I have great respect for the Thompson family. The, Jim's a great guy, they've done great things for the community out there. I don't know Lucas, but I, I do know his dad. They're, they're good people, and, and I don't wanna put any kind of shadow on them at all, but it's still a rezoning that is a permanent fixture of this piece of property, and personally, I'd rather get this correct, you know, once we do this, and, uh, and hopefully, uh, between staff and, and the applicant and their engineer, they can, you all can come to a plan that, you've heard a lot of conversation here from us tonight, something that we, a- a, and you all brainstorm about the best way to, to facilitate that. Uh, if you, if it don't lose a month and it don't have to go to BZA, it could end up being quicker if they come through with a planned unit development. But, uh, with that said, if nobody else wants to say anything, I'll make a motion that we defer this item until whatever date staff and applicant decide.
I'll, I'll second that. I, I was just fixing to say that, Will, I think that, uh, Mr. Thompson, that the people, the honorable, they do what they say they'll do, and I think that between them and, can we do it in two weeks, do you think, and, and let the neighbors, let him talk with the neighbors and, and, and answer all the questions of the neighbors and do it in their next-day meeting, is that what you're saying, Will?
My motion's left it up to them and staff to work it out, because if they've gotta make a pattern book, and I doubt their, their engineer's gonna have that ready in two weeks, and I doubt they're gonna have their neighborhood meeting and stuff, but I just left the, the deferment flexible, if that's legal. Josh, are we supposed to defer to a set time?
I think, oh, well, that's, probably do need to defer it. You, you don't wanna defer it indefinitely. I didn't understand that to be your motion, I thought you meant?
My motion was defer it until whatever time the applicant and staff worked out now, but that?
I think you need to defer it to a specific meeting date, and then they can work on it in the interim if it needs to be deferred further. I think that, that's inappropriate.
We can defer it, and Doug, report back to us in two weeks, it'll be back on the agenda, or we'll get a report at that time.
This is, this is what the bylaws say in relation to deferring an application. The planning commission may also defer an application following a public hearing if it deems more information is needed prior to making a recommendation. Deferrals may be for a period of not to exceed thirty-five days from the date of the public hearing, the applicant may agree to a longer deferral period. So if you wanna defer it until the next night meeting, I think that's appropriate because you, you're within your bylaws to do that.
I'll put that in my motion until the next night.
Okay, are, are, you're not deferring it to, for them to come with the PUD back with the, the work, but just for them to work out this situation?
They can work out whatever they feel is, is appropriate with staff. If they want to change it to PUD, you know, they, they've heard the conversation as much as we have here, you know, and, and, uh, they can work with staff, cause I mean, I don't know if anybody's here is gonna vote for exactly what we've got here, it ought to at least be commercial services, which we could do that tonight, but, but my motion is to defer and that'll, that'll leave staff and applicant some lead weight of work what, what direction they think is best.
Okay, we're not, not demanding a PUD for them to work it out. Okay, I'll second.
That deferred until our July, I think it's the eleventh?
I believe that's correct, yes sir.
July the eleventh meeting, six PM meeting? Hey, Josh?
It is, yes, and I, I think Commissioner Jordan is exactly right, they could come forward at that point, they maybe have changed it by then, they might decide not to change it, they might come back with what they've got and try to convince you to do this, but hopefully they will work with staff and come back with something different, but there's no restriction on what they come back with, it's just a deferment at this point.
They could, they could come up with a slightly different plan here and make some agreement with the neighbors, and everybody could bless it, and we could all be fine.
Yep.
We have a motion and a second, uh, to defer. Uh, let me just ask this question, Mr. Thompson, um, and Mr. Looney, is that right? Uh, both of you guys kind of understand what we're doing?
Well, I probably have a harder time explaining it to my father than I have to. I've tried to do the best I can. See, I make the, I do, is just get my neighbor here, if they be here, and just make sure we're all the same age. Uh, if you don't, uh, we're, we're just, we're just looking at, we're just, we're just looking at, that's what I want to do, I don't like that. Can you explain the, the difference in, I don't know, PUD, what we guys talk about?
Yeah, a planned development zoning, uh, the question was, in case the microphones didn't pick it up, what's the difference between, say, the conventional zones and a planned development? A PUD, which stands for planned unit development, it's really a zone that's specific to the use that the applicant is asking for. Uh, it could be just one use, it could be a, a, a list of uses that are similar in nature, but essentially what they're doing is they're creating their own zoning classification in a way. It's own PUD, but they're saying we're gonna use these setbacks, we're gonna use this concept plan is what we're gonna use as far as the building locations, we're gonna use this type of screening, uh, maybe building materials as part of it. It's, it's more specific, it gives a little more, it gives a little more surety to the neighbors of what's gonna be out there, but at the same time, it gives more flexibility to the developer because they're not bound by the conventional setback restrictions, they can kind of vary as they go. Did that answer your question?
Yes, sir, as opposed to?
As opposed to any of the conventional commercial services, commercial general, any of the normal, what I call regular zoning classifications, yeah. You're welcome.
We good? We have motion to defer item number sixteen dash A zero one one. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to defer, please say aye. Is there any opposition? The motion carries. This will be deferred hopefully until our July eleventh meeting where it will be reconsidered. It'll be six o'clock right here. I, I didn't have it on my calendar, but it is the eleventh, is everybody?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. Item number six C has been withdrawn. Old Business Staff Reports?
I don't have anything unless you all have something you'd like to discuss with me.
Our next meeting, um, if you will recall, has been moved from Monday, six twenty-seven, until Tuesday, six twenty-eight, nine, nine AM in the planning mess. Anyone have anything else? I'd like to thank the public for their input tonight, it's helpful, it is always helpful to us to reach a decision, hopefully that'll be in the best interest of all citizens of this county. Thank you, we are adjourned.